Should we get set up for the council meeting?
Can I bring up one?
Oh, yeah.
I'm sure several people have probably been asked the same question, but I've been asked the question, is it possible for us to get more water lines out at Swift Lake Park or campgrounds, not sewer lines, but just water lines?
It's possible. I know we talked about, and that's the reason we had them stay with the two inch running out there right now, because they have to relocate that line to Swift Lake. So I don't know what we're looking at. For sites, we looked at, you know, possibilities of adding sites to, because there is some holidays where it's full out there.
And if we have construction guys in town and stuff?
But I mean, it wouldn't take much, because all those lines, I don't think they're buried the full depth, because we drain them back every winter. I'm not sure. I wasn't around when they put them in, but I mean, it's just a matter of...
I'm just wondering if it's something we could look at. Maybe we should look at that as a budget item for next year.
Okay.
You know, and not if we do it this year, but it could be some possibility.
I wonder if it'd be cost effective to do it with the relocating of that line?
Well, we're just gonna connect, we're not going into the park with that line. We're just gonna connect back on, on the edge of the field.
Okay.
So that'll all be existing yet, but I mean, you get a boring machine out there, it won't take much.
Do you think it's in two feet in the ground?
I'm sure it is, it's at least two feet, but I don't know that it's six.
How many lots do we have with water in motion?
I want to say there's five.
So if we could maybe look at doubling that or something, see what we...
And right now, I'm still going through all the stipulations with the Department of Health. We were informed that we're supposed to have an annual license for that facility. No one ever knew that, so. No cost for the license, but it has to meet their standards, so I've been going through that. I don't think we're gonna have too much to do out there, but, so.
Anything else from anybody?
Um, no. The only thing I was gonna mention, I know it's on the agenda too, is to talk about the Airport Commission.
Yeah, okay.
And I realize on there, it says that you gotta be a voting member or a voting citizen in the town. It might be worth discussing whether or not, I know we don't have a charter commission to change things around, but it might be worth talking about whether or not we could change that, because when I was looking at it, that's really the only board that has that in there.
That's correct.
And I was curious as to why that is.
I think the Library Board's got a...
No, the Library Board does not.
I thought it was a statute requirement.
Uh, no, we looked into that just like a month ago, Tony. We did verify that it did not say that, so.
So we're thinking like trying to get...
It says a community in the state.
Oh, yeah. I mean, or just, you know, not have that in there, because you can conceive of people who use the airport, that are involved in the airport, that don't necessarily live in town. So I don't know, and I was just curious as to why that was in there initially, but...
I managed to ask to do it, recommending spending money. You don't want somebody from out of town spending your money. But at the same time, if you want to change it, just as long as they hang an airplane out there, so they're aware of what's going on versus...
Let's start, I'm thinking that's what we can do in the meantime while we're waiting to change it. And then the other thing I did when I was reading through those again, apparently we appointed people that the board's wrong, because I'm supposed to appoint them and then you just say, "Yeah, that's good." Because now we've been, or the mayor does that, and we've been doing motions by council members and second and end voting, because apparently we're doing it incorrectly.
We're doing a lot of things incorrectly. Steve, there's a couple more that I have tonight that I have to bring up.
Right. But anyway, see what happens when you look at one issue and you find like seven other ones.
You gotta find all of them, man.
Welcome to the world, huh?
It's a free country. Now shut up and do what you're told.
Whatever you want, unless...
Until you get caught and then beg forgiveness.
Until the Department of Health says, "Hey, you need a license for this."
Easier to be granted for permission.
Yeah, they weren't too, you know, they said, "Well, we inspect campgrounds." Like, are we supposed to have anything for ours? He's like, "You know, you guys do have one, don't you?" Like, "Well, send me what we need to do, I guess if it does," so. They weren't, they weren't bent up about, we were talking to them when we...
Which this was all...
Discussing the senior center, so, or the multipurpose center.
No, the first time...
Well, yeah, now the tail stuff all got rolled into a different ball of wax. Now you got regimes, you got appeals and...
Yep. New inspectors to...
I read it this way and I read it that way.
It doesn't cost, we just have to do paperwork.
So on the April 24th, for the truce and decades, do we all need to be here?
We have to have a forum, and one member of that forum as a minimum has to be certified for...
And there is a lot of...
Nope.
Roger, who was the city administrator at the time?
I went to do the training and it's not offered yet.
Because I signed up.
The vast majority of us.
You have to have a forum.
Well, let's get started. I'll see the passengers. We call to order the regular meeting of the Tracy City Council for Monday, March 27, 2017. Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody can have a seat. All right, next we got approval of the minutes from our meetings on March 6 and March 13. Anybody have any questions or comments about those minutes that are being taken? Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We have approval of the agenda. We got some additions there?
I do. On your agenda, you'll see there is a 9F, which is a plumber's license. From, we've received an application from Mike's Plumbing and Heating. And then I have 9G, a portion of the retainage from Dunick, Inc., to be used to, for repair on the Mattson property in the amount of 110783. And then an additional resolution, 11F, a resolution approving a portion of the retainage to Dunick, Inc., to be used to cover the sewer blockage bills. Is that the same thing?
Yeah, that's the same thing as 9G, so it's the discussion and then a resolution to pass it.
Gotcha. Anybody else have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, we have a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
What is the motion?
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Public comment? Does anybody hear from the public that wants to comment on something that's not on the agenda? Nope. Public hearings, reports, petitions, requests, and communications, appointments to committee. You got the Airport Board, and as I said in our working session a couple of minutes before we started up with our actual session, I was contacted by people about why certain, an individual couldn't be on the Airport Commission because, you know, they didn't live in town, and apparently they had been on the Airport Commission even while they lived out of town. But, you know, looking at our ordinance, it says that they gotta be in town in order to be on the Airport Commission. But in thinking about it and looking at the other ordinances for the other committees, that's not, there's not that requirement for any other boards, and I didn't understand why we'd have that for the Airport Commission. But my feeling is, is that now we just, we'd mentioned, because we needed volunteers to go to a meeting and approve something out there, because we don't have a functioning Airport Commission. So while we're waiting for the Charter Commission to get together, add this to some of the things that they need to look at, but I think in the time being, we should collectively as a council make an exception for, at least anyway, with the one applicant that was denied. But while we're waiting to get that changed around, and I think it's a good idea, Tony, that as long as someone has an airplane and a hangar out there, they could be eligible to be on the Airport Commission regardless of whether or not they live in town or not. So with that being said, I don't know anybody that comments about that or not, but I, if we're all right with that and changing it once the Charter Commission gets involved, I would appoint Neil Daniels to the Airport Commission, even though he doesn't live in town.
And we still have control of who's gonna be on it or not.
Right.
And there's no decision that get made that we don't have to prove. I mean, they come to us with recommendations, so I don't have any issue with that.
Oh, yeah.
So, okay. So all in favor of me appointing Neil to the Airport Commission signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right. There, we got the MPC Board.
What were your questions, Steve? On that airport, with, now with Neil and with Dave, do you need one more?
Yes.
Okay. I know two people that have airplanes out there that don't live in town, so I can see if I can get, talk to one of those two to get on board then, so.
And I do know Kurt Anderson picked up an application as well.
Okay.
They're on board, so.
All right, the MPC Board. What do we got with that?
Um, we have an application.
Yep, Shorty Angle.
I just assumed that was, was that the last meeting?
It's not on that, he didn't fill it in on the actual application, so that's why it looks different.
Well, apparently now I understand, but I read that.
Then you can say, "I rescind that motion."
It's like getting Senate approval for appointments. I'll appoint Shorty Angle to the MPC Board, so all in favor of my appointment for doing that signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, the Library Board, we got one on our desk and then also Barbara Knutson.
Yeah.
And we have spaces available, don't we?
Yes.
Okay, so...
You do have a...
Two.
I should give a full board.
All right, so what I'm gonna do is appoint Barbara Knutson and Joan Zimke to the Library Board. All in favor of those appointments signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries.
If I may address, I was looking through the, the city code, and there was a question raised about one of the board members serving another additional three-year term.
Oh, yeah, on the Library Board.
Yeah. The city code needs to be modified, being conformant with the state statute. There has to be staggered terms. The state statute prohibits three terms, someone serving three, executive three-year terms, and also the makeup of the board needs to be staggered terms, three for three, three, or two for two and then two for three. That's by state statute, so the city probably needs to amend the city code to adopt those staggered terms in the library.
We'll add that to the list.
We're fine in all kinds of...
So we're just gonna scrap it all together and start from scratch.
Talking staggered, that's the same thing that applies to the Charter Commission, if I remember right, also.
We're gonna address that here in a little bit, Tony.
And the D is the same way too with...
And speaking of the Charter Commission, I know when I was in here the other day, I know Diane was on the phone busy. Where are we at with that and what's happening?
I'm gonna let Diane address that, because she's been doing a lot of work on it. Currently, according to Minnesota state statute, we can't, we can't have a Charter Commission right now, because we don't have enough members, but I'm gonna let Diane take over, okay?
Yeah, the state statute, from what I'm getting, and I also talked with the cities, Minnesota...
League of Minnesota Cities.
Minnesota Cities, you have to have a minimum of seven and a maximum of 15. Our charter says nine, that we can have up to nine members, but we have to have at least seven, and we currently have four.
How many do we have?
Four. Um, we...
Have you got any applications pending?
Those are members.
Have you got any applications pending?
No.
And that doesn't include board members, council members, right, then? Or is that total, are there council members on there?
No.
No?
Okay.
So we need nine?
Five more.
We need seven.
Total, we need not...
Seven.
Well, seven for sure.
Have a functioning board, and then even when we have the seven, they have to be appointed by the district court judge.
Correct, which we have...
You have in your packet.
Resolutions, and we have to, the charter's been inactive since 11, 2011, so we have to reestablish our charter through the courts as well, which there's a resolution in the packet to do that.
What's the Charter Commission rules for, who can be on it? Do you have to live in the city?
I believe so.
I don't think the council member can serve on it.
I don't think the councilian either, and I have been, I have been asked if employees can serve on it too, and I believe it, they cannot either.
They cannot. Our charter says no. State statute, I think, says you can, our charter says no.
Our charter says no state, no employees, but the state doesn't care.
State doesn't care.
They have to get it.
There's gonna be a whole list for the Charter Commission when it gets established.
Well, I mean...
I've read that.
Yeah. If we can't even get started, okay, maybe we need to look at if there are, well, first of all, why don't we wait until the next council meeting and see if there's people interested applying, and hopefully after they hear this, they will, because there's things we need to clean up and we can't. So I would say if we don't get any applications by the next meeting, I think we need to revisit to see whether or not employees, we could make an exception at this time, just to get the ball rolling.
Do they have term limits on that? Do they need to be staggered as well?
Staggered, all.
Yes.
I've talked to a couple of members that served on the Charter Commission back when it was active, and they told me they picked up applications. I will remind them they need to turn them in before we can do anything.
No, it's imperative.
I think there was like three still living from that original, because that's why...
Oh, from the original, yeah, but there was, there was other members that served.
Oh, okay, because that's what I thought about too, as we talked about, but Diane did the rest of...
And they have to live in town, or do they work in town?
They have to live in town.
Live in town.
Be resident of council.
Okay.
If you do that, you might want to look through all the city codes and the charter to see if that's all in compliance with state statute currently.
It's all good. Anyway.
Once you do one, I don't know.
So, yeah, I hope by this time, when our next meeting, hopefully there are applicants. If there aren't, we gotta do something to get this started, because the list of things we need to correct is growing, and we need to get going. Okay, uh, 9B Prairie Women's Expo request to waive fee, and we have that in our packet too. We have a motion to waive their fee for the use of the VMC.
I'd make the motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. 9C, we have request to purchase global search platform software, Madonna, and we have that in our packet.
You do, that's me. And she reached out to me this morning, and I will say that the one I included in your agenda packet says it is a total of $9,870. However, she said she added it wrong, and it's actually $9,970. I did put a memo out there with this, kind of explaining what the global search is. I can entertain any questions that anyone has, or explain to you the majority of our process if you wish. I can kind of explain to you what it is and what it does.
Well, I guess generally people would ask, would having this save us money?
Um, I believe it would in efficiency, because right now, if we have to go get an invoice, if we have to take a copy of an invoice, say for instance, a project or for the auditors or whatever, we're either upstairs looking or downstairs looking in boxes that we have to keep to actually find it. So...
Okay.
Time-wise, yes. The software is capable of all kinds of things. The original quote that I received was like $29,000, and I said, "No, uh-uh. We don't need all that. We do all that stuff already. I only want it to research something, is all I want it to do." So this is what I...
And after this, and after this fee, is there any other costs associated with this program in later years?
There could be. I did not do a, you know how every year when you purchase a software program, how there's always licensing, upgrade fees, support, they call it. This quote was only a one year. She asked me if I wanted to include a five-year, and I said no, because if it's gonna work like they say it's gonna work, to me, if it's a program that we purchase and it's something that's gonna continually work that we don't have to, we may or may not have to. It sounds like it's about $1,300 a year.
Oh, okay.
For the update and supports, but no, this quote does not include only the first year.
Okay.
See, there's three licenses, Madonna. Do you need it on three computers, or can you get by with less?
The reason why there's three licenses, Tony, is so that only three people at once can be in it, but this will help, like say for instance, Jason wants to look something up, or Shane wants to look something up, or, you know, just like in the software thing, that's why it has three licenses. Can we get by with one? We probably could. I can verify the amount difference if you would like me to.
I just, out of curiosity, is what...
That's a good question.
But yeah, then maintenance and support, if at all it is, is data retrieval, I don't see...
That's exactly, okay. That's a good idea.
If they could do it on one or two licenses versus three, how much a guy would save?
I believe she told me it was either one, and then it went to three, and then it went up to like 10. They didn't have a price for each one, it was, yeah, but I will definitely check that out and come back next time.
Yeah, I mean, it's worth exploring, because if it's gonna save you time, that's good.
I, if anybody wants to look through it, I do have the whole packet that she left, what it's capable of doing, but like I said, I totally scaled that all back.
I don't think we would understand.
I totally scaled that all back, because I don't think it's necessary.
It's, it's not gonna eliminate the need of storing paper copies either, though.
But that's ultimately a goal, Tony.
Right.
It really is a goal. We've been trying to do that with the server for a number of years already, and if we could scan an invoice that comes in, we don't have to keep one.
Okay, that's what I was curious.
So yes, it would, and that's why I put in the memo that over the years, many of the spaces of the building have been given for use. We're out of room. We don't, I mean, we have no room for anything, and...
Would you scan in any of the old stuff?
No. I could, we could, if there's time allowed, or if we get like a sentence to serve employee. I actually recently heard that John from over at the library and Val might even be able to, something with experienced works, he might be looking for another experienced works jobs where we don't, you know, we don't employ the person, they're employed by experienced work, but they, you know, have a job, that we're required by law to keep six years worth of service, so we could go back, and that is something that...
I mean, I know that'd be a time-consuming job.
But even like right now, Dave, we've been in the process of scanning, you know, like cemetery deeds and cemetery disposition permits and everything. I mean, right now they're all sitting on jump drives, because, but I mean, it would be perfect. It really would.
Okay. Yeah, well, check that out, Madonna, about if we could be on, what the price is for one computer.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, okay. We got 9D RFP and bid specs for the Masonic Building, and we talked about that in our working meeting prior. We have that, and we're working on trying to find another building for the tenant in the Bass Building, from what I understand. Anybody have any questions or comments about the procedure that's gonna possibly take place then with the demolition of the Masonic Building?
When are we hoping to start? Is that in...
Through the 17th of April.
Yeah, the actual demolition, I think, we're hoping, hopefully by May. Was I, was I reading that right?
Yeah, that's what they were talking, was trying to get one done in May. Did, do you have any luck on a demo site?
Not yet.
Or are you able to do that, or you don't know?
Still in the process. I'm hoping so, but we'll see. I don't know how many strings are attached either, so.
I hear you.
All right, so do we have a motion then to approve the specs and the bidding out then for the demolition of the Masonic Building?
I'd make that motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, we got the farm lease, and we talked about that a little bit with Madonna and Dan already, and Madonna, you and Dan visited, and a reduction in the lease per acre is warranted, because now everything's all chopped up out there. And your agreement was what, 175?
175 per acre. It was 190 per acre the last three years.
There's a slight reduction in acres, 110.
Yep.
Previous is 122, but it incorporates all the same terms as the other leases, and just clean up the language, and a couple renewals, so it's easier to read.
I'd make a motion to approve the farm lease.
Second.
Motion made in second. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Happy farming, Dan.
Thank you.
9F, we got a plumber's license for Mike Plumbing and Heating. Do we have a motion to grant that license provided they pay the fee?
Who is that?
You don't appoint plumbers, though.
What'd I say, a plumber's license?
He's had one previously, hasn't he?
He has not.
No.
Here's who it is.
No, it's not local. They're not local.
So somebody must, in town, must be doing a job, and he needs to get licensed to be able to do that job for them.
Yeah.
I'm not sure where it's from right off hand.
Bet your name's Mike.
Yeah, Mike's Plumbing and Heating.
Yeah, so I'd make the motion we approve that as long as all the licenses update and fees are paid.
We do require a copy of the master plumber's license and all the liability insurance and all that stuff too, so part of the process.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I did.
Oh, you did. Thanks, Dave. Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, a portion of, 9G, portion of retainage from Dunick to be used to repair Mattson property in the amount of 1,100 bucks. And Chris, we didn't get a chance to talk with you at our working meeting, because we were too busy.
That's right. Yeah, there was a backup with the Mattsons Cemetery Service. It was due to some workmanship issues by Dunick, and they agreed to pay for the repair, and I think some of the cleanup bills included in that, I believe. I'm not sure. But everything that the property owner submitted to the city, Dunick agreed to pay for, so the city will pay them, and we're holding money back from the contractor, and we'll reduce their contract amount by that amount when we make their final payment.
Did we have anything in there for sidewalks, for repair of, and I just noticed today when we were all over at the MPC, there's a huge crack running right through the, one of the new paths.
We still have money withheld. It was mostly for seating, but it's in excess of what the actual cost of seating is, just so they wouldn't walk away. So, yeah, we can look at that, and if it's something that needs to be repaired, we can talk to them about that.
I would hope we have something there.
Is it more than a cosmetic cracks? You know, the old saying?
It's a, it's a big, probably five-foot crack, and there's a chip in the middle of it that's...
Okay.
But it's right, right where the ramp goes up off the street in the corner there to the MPC Building is where it's at.
Okay.
And I didn't pay any attention to any other spots around, but...
Yeah.
Probably wouldn't hurt to walk around and take a look at the sidewalks.
Um, and then if you don't mind, we had our pre-construction meeting on Friday for the Phase One project. Dunick plans to start on April 13. They're going to start with the downfall line at the airport, working their way back towards town, and it sounds like around April 1st is when they plan to start into Circle Drive. So we're gonna send out a project newsletter to everybody, kind of let them know the preliminary schedule, and we'll be sending those out weekly once construction starts, so.
What are their plans on Hollitt Street between Fifth and Second here for access? They've got, they've got a rehabilitative service residence there on Hollitt?
Yep.
One wheelchair patient?
Yep, we, in the plans, we require that access be maintained at all times, so there's phasing, so likely what they're going to do is, well, they won't be able to tear into Second while Hollitt is torn up, so, and then they might have to do like some sort of plywood, yeah, cut in kind of a curb cut, so that they can still get up to that, yeah.
Just want to make sure that was on.
Yep, yep. So that was one of the things, we have that open house, and that was one of the things someone brought up, so that's it. We like when people come with those open houses.
That's been a while.
Yeah, yep, yep.
No motion for that?
Um...
I guess it's a resolution later.
Oh, down for there, okay, never mind.
All right, is there anything else, Chris?
No, I don't have anything else. If I can hang around, otherwise I'll take off, probably.
Just take off.
Okay, thank you.
Let's deal with then the resolution for 11F, Resolution 2017-22, Resolution approving a portion of retainage to Dunick to be used to cover sewer blockage bills.
What was approved, resolution?
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. All right, next we got Resolution 11A, reestablishing the Charter Commission for the City of Tracy, and we had that in our packet, and we heard the reason why we need to do that. So do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
Make a motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have a resolution to appoint, appointment of members to the Charter Commission. We also have that in our packet. We got three members there. We have a motion to adopt this resolution.
Four, isn't it?
I saw three listed in here.
Three new ones, Dave.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have a motion to adopt this resolution?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Next, we have resolution twenty seventeen dash nineteen, waiving, uh, special assessments on Fourth and Morgan Street and we have that in our packet. And we had it at the last meeting too and we were gonna check to see whether or not, uh...
I went through and changed the figures and updated it.
Gotcha.
I went off of our assessment book, so it should be correct.
Anybody have any questions or comments about the resolution? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make a motion.
Pam?
Second.
Thank you. Motion made in second, it all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And we can reflect that you two guys didn't vote. Bill and, uh, Tony. All right. Uh, resolution twenty seventeen twenty, resolution approving a social media policy. And Adam talked about that a little bit in our working meeting there. Anybody have any questions or comments about that?
I'd move approval.
Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. And then next, uh, twenty seventeen twenty-one, resolution approving the City of Tracy Cable Access Channel Policies and Procedures. That is also, uh, in our packet. Any questions about that?
I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made in second, it all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. All right, we got the consent calendar. We got, uh, the municipal counts payable and receivable. Anybody have any questions or comments about that? Hearing none, we have a motion. Is there a motion?
Yep.
Second.
Motion made in second, is there any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Let's just do the approval of the minutes done in the MPC from one twenty-three. Everybody have questions or comments about those minutes? If not, do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the MPC meeting on one twenty-three seventeen?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made in second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Department head reports. Val? Go ahead, Derek.
All right, well, thank you for approving our new library board members. We have our full board in place now, so that's great. It's nice to get a couple of new members on there. Uh, we've had a few events lately, they went well. We finally got to have our Tracy Reed's discussion yesterday after getting snowed out on the twelfth. Um, we're working on policies still and I ran into the same thing with the, with the city charter. I sat down and wanted to start...
We don't wanna hear it.
I wanted to start writing some bylaws and I said, I can't do this because I can't write bylaws that say this when the city charter says something else. So what the library board did at their last meeting was to put together a committee. Um, and we met last week to put together recommended changes to the library board portion of that. So hopefully, once the city charter commission gets going, um, that will help them out, that we have some recommended changes for them. Um, otherwise, our annual report has been submitted and our winter reading program will be wrapping up. We have, uh, an author, Chad Lewis, coming on Friday. Any questions?
Well, appreciate you waiting around.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Val.
Shane, anything you wanna say?
Not a whole lot, other than what was on my report. Um, guys are working on the second filter right now. They've been, they have four hundred and twenty-three little diffusers that are taken apart and cleaned and sand out of, so they're real excited about that. Uh, airport inventory, um, it's an update there. Um, Madonna and I got access to the FAA airport for the tail number updates. And I did find out that we have eleven registered. But one of them out of the eleven is registered also in the City Marshals Airport. So we technically only have ten. Um, and that one, potential one, is the one we're having, the one that does not store an airplane out there at the current time. So I'm actually gonna send out some letters to everyone that is currently have tail numbers out there to update the information so we can keep up to date on that. Been about three years since it was last updated, so I've been working on that also, so... Any other questions? I'll look at that, uh, other house too on, uh, Fifth Street. See if we can move forward on... Apparently the owners changed, so now I gotta start over again, so, but see if the county attorney will work with me on that one, so.
That'll work. Madonna?
I will entertain any questions that you may have for me.
Yeah. Yeah, we went through all this in the, the working meeting. Sometimes I don't know whether the public wants to hear about what your updates are because...
Yeah, but...
Any highlights? Do you wanna let us know about? Because when we talked about stuff that's going on at the multipurpose center, that's a good idea. What's the stuff that's going on over there?
Yeah, I guess then, couple of things then, I can bring something up. Um, when we put it, the agenda towards the end, um, were the unfinished visions, unfinished business where we put the questions from the public before, are you guys gonna answer that?
Hopefully, somebody can answer them.
Okay, well, I didn't know how you wanted me to see them that.
I think, I think it's, well, can I, can I say diplomatically that it's a collective answer?
Okay. Okay.
Because some of the questions that, you know, that are brought up, we probably could answer.
Okay, do you want me to research it then and give you something on it?
If you could, I mean, I know like one of the questions was that we had to deal with, uh, uh, Gail had asked, do we have like a committee to hear about issues?
Yeah.
So...
I think I included that in the agenda.
Yeah, I think so.
So I didn't know if you wanted me to research it or if you guys were gonna research it or how you wanted me to do it, so...
Well, we'll just deal with it. Those are questions that were asked.
Yeah, but that's gonna be on the agenda here in a little bit.
All right, we'll never forget it. We'll just deal with it then.
Yeah, I just, that was a highlight, I guess, that, a question I had.
Well, since you're prepared for it, then maybe in the future meetings, you answer the questions.
No, that's fine, I, do you want me to prepare?
Well, if you could, that'd be cool, I, yeah, I mean, yeah, let's just do that and then we'll generate discussion and see. That'll work. But anyway, just so the people can hear about what's going on at the multipurpose center?
Uh, multipurpose center, the light retrofit has been, um, completed and the ceiling tiles are all done. Um, painting on the ceiling tile in the back has been done and we have been over to the multipurpose center to get a re-quote on the floor. Um, we are looking at installing, um, a new vinyl flooring and taking the carpet out that was there because of the condition of the carpet. Um, there is breakfast going on over at the multipurpose center, so if anybody wants to, um, uh, have breakfast, uh, we are offering it. Um, uh, coffee is a dollar and I think the most expensive, um, menu item is six dollars. It is a limited menu. Um, um, we are having special days where we offer a more larger menu. Um, I will say that, um, she is going to try to do a breakfast one Saturday a month as well upon request, um, which we did do last week. Um, last week or two weeks ago, and I actually went over and waited the whole time myself, so, um...
You still got the skills.
Hey, yeah, I was good. Um, yeah, it's, um, I think very positive change.
Yeah. Anybody have any questions, uh, from Madonna on? All right, thank you. I think that's, all the other department heads are gone.
Yeah, Jason is on vacation yet and Sandy, I believe, is on vacation too. She on vacation too, yeah, okay. So they had their mem- uh, memos in here, agendas?
He thinks they're scheduling their vacations just to coincide with department head reports.
Wouldn't you?
No, I would not.
Oh, okay.
All right, anywho, we go on to thirteen unfinished business, uh, Gail Whiting questions and, uh, it was at the last public comment period, she, uh, Gail had asked two questions and I, Madonna, you passed something out there, you showed us that, presented two questions, so just go ahead and I'm gonna say, oh, you got the, someone's reading. Pam's done, anyway. Just remind everybody what the two questions were.
Okay. Um, the first question, uh, received, I would like to know what the procedure is when the first person who causes the conflict, does the bullying is on the employee relations committee and what protections there are for a person being bullied? Is there any anonymous reporting system or procedure in place? Um, the answer to that question is there's, there is a... I didn't answer this very well. There is a handbook, um, that addresses, um, everything that is referenced, um, but it, or talked about, but it does not reference elected officials.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I, I guess since there isn't, that they would probably just contact one of us or something.
That's what I would say too.
All right, and what's the next question?
The second question was, when is it okay to have closed meetings and what is allowed? Please cite state laws and what is available to the public. Information about meetings can be found on the Minnesota Office of the Reviser of Statutes State website in chapter four twelve at forward slash statutes forward slash. A guide to the type of meetings and notices can also be found on the League of Minnesota Cities website at www.lmc.org forward slash page forward slash one forward slash general dash search dot JSP. I do have this in the office for anybody that wants to, uh, come pick this up or look at it. We will have it available for you because those websites, I guess, are kind of hard to cite, so...
Yeah, and, and the long and short of it is it's extremely limited. As you can have a closer, I mean, it's not open-ended that you could just say, oh, today we're gonna have a closer. Talk about, you know, it's limited to what you could do. So, thank you for providing that information. Okay, and next we had, uh, spring cleanup and, and Bill, I brought that up, uh, because we had visited before you went, went out of town. And we talked about possibly having the spring cleanup. We talked about the last meeting like once, uh, at least once a year and that you had indicated that you would visit with Dan, uh, Ritter. Um, and I don't know what, what follow-up we would talk about because we'd asked about, uh, some ways of funding it would be seventy-five cents or something on a water bill?
I have been looking into that and I have not reached out to Matt yet, but we are limited to certain things that we can charge on a, on a water bill. Um, I, there's another thing that has come up with some other funding options that we have passed or put in place that we are not doing correctly either. Um, so we would need to do a little bit of research to see if that is something that we can even put on a water bill. Um, but it's a great idea.
We could ask for donations.
Yeah, and that's the other thing, so we, the other option was we discussed if somebody wants to put like an extra ten dollars on...
I think we need to kind of come up with an estimate on what it would cost. I mean, we can get enough volunteer labor, I would hope, that would help with something like that. I mean, part of that is just community pride.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
You know, trying to help your, you know, people that maybe can't do it. You know, maybe we come up with, with a dollar a month. I know over at the landfill, I think it's like fifteen bucks, uh, an appliance roughly to drop those off. So I mean, we could kind of come up with an estimate of, even if we put out a memo and just said, do you have an appliance, you wanna get rid of this, let us know? So we kind of get a number, you know, so we kind of know where we're at.
For the appliance, though, there's the, I said it last time, it was the wrong town. It's A to Z Recycling up in Porter. And I've got his number, I can get it to you. But they do appliance recycling and I tried to stop him there today, but he wasn't around. But see if, would they come down and actually pick it up and what would be the cost to a person to do it?
Well, and you know, I had, um, Excel came and picked up my refrigerator and gave me thirty-five bucks for it.
Really, I didn't know about that one.
Mm-hmm.
I do know that we have had Mike Bottelberg from Monique Grove do the same thing a couple of years ago when we did it. And then there's also one called Eagle Recycling, I believe, out of Westbrook.
Westbrook, I think. I've had that picked up.
So we do have a couple of options.
Ten dollars a unit.
Lion County has no recycling, mattresses and box springs as well, they're seven bucks a piece.
So are we looking for funding for regular garbage, not appliances, or what's the...
I think it's just, I, I, I think, in my eyes, it would be funding for people that maybe have got things they just, they can't afford to get rid of them, so they wanna get rid of them in a way that we can help them do that. But other than that, it'd be like, spring cleanup, what I'm thinking is maybe if people haul all their branches out to the boulevard, we get a couple of dump trailers and we come by and we pick them up and we haul them out to the, to the landfill for people that can't, or go and have a trailer to do that.
Come by my yard after the winter.
But I mean, you know, that, it, there's paint, I mean, there's a lot of things that we can do. There's a lot of homes that need to be painted, you know, if we could come up with some way to try and entice people, uh, to do that. And then I, I don't know if that's where, I don't, uh, Marlon Meyer had addressed some things too. I don't know if that was part of the spring cleanup, but a couple council meetings.
I think that would help in some of the issues that he, you know, that he addressed, yeah.
Issues with, with what I would call junk in the yard, you know, um...
You know, that's why, like, when all of these churches go on mission trips and they go out of the state, I always thought, why are they going so far away when there's people right here that need that stuff done?
And last summer, we did have a crew of young people who was in town painting. I don't know where they were from.
I don't know where they were from either, but I do know that they put out a little, um, you know, brochure or whatever for people to contact them and stuff, so...
You know, now that you mention that, with, with the churches, which you can, you can yell at the secretary for the notes for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Board whether or not present after you have a meeting because it takes the secretary a while to get them together. But one of the things that we had talked about at the last meeting was that the, at the Monique Alliance Church, their youth pastor was going to have their group, if we make it do projects like that for the city.
That'd be wonderful.
So I don't know if you wanna get in contact with him or not, Madonna.
Okay.
Because I know that they'd be interested in that and I, I'm making sure our church, our, our youth group would do that too. I, I think that, that's, that's a very good idea.
Well, I, I, I guess I just look at it like we have a national night out and that's an important thing, that's a big thing to me, uh, uh, once a year, you know, town's spring cleanup is just as important. I mean, when people come into our town, you know, what reflects is, is things that they see and it would just be nice to, at least once a year. And I don't know if it'd be in the spring or it would be in, you know, mid summer or what, but at least, uh...
Just a cleanup day.
Just a cleanup day.
I did do a little bit of research on spring cleanups in other cities and there is a couple of model policies out there that they have um, for things such as, you know, furniture box springs, you know, different thing, excuse me, different things and how they actually do it. Um, I'll continue to do that research and get that out there too.
Because those are the type of things that I'm thinking about, because I can't tell you how many computer monitors I have that you just don't sell, I'm not gonna, uh, whatever. I mean, and it's even furniture like, like that, you just stick in a basement and say, well, I'll get to it eventually.
And I even think we should invite and entice some of our local farmers to, uh, help with that because we have a lot of yards in town that are full of corn husks. Our Swift Lake Park, I don't know if you've driven out there, but it's a mess with, with corn husks, you know? So it wouldn't hurt to ask our local farmers that farm around town, you know, hey, this is part of your, you know...
Too bad, damn luck.
Well, I didn't want to do single, you know, I'm up.
Well, we could, so you want it, you want the rent down to one seventy-five, well, how about?
If you drive around, I mean, last year was bad, but this year's bad too. If you drive around, there's a lot of corn chunks and husks that are blowing in the...
You know, last year we had the school, the school had that cleanup day. They had it right at the end of the year, one of the last few days of school. They wanted, you know, community projects to do and usually have them do the, the softball fields, get it hit hard at out by a premium plant and so does the, um, Swift Lake bushes and stuff like that.
Um, and that's another, it's always looking for stuff too.
You know, I've thought that too, you know, multiple times. I know with National Night Out, we've reached out to multiple different groups to ask for, you know, assistance and help and stuff. And it seems like sometimes they do and sometimes it don't, but that'd be great if we could get, you know, uh, even the school.
Like it always has to work, but...
Exactly.
And even, you know, even out at Swift Lake Park, you guys do a great job with everything, all through Shane, but you know, a lot of people don't camp there, but they drive through and that's an impression on the city of all that.
Or walk through on, like, right on the bike trail or whatever and, um, so I, you know, that would be...[1723.11]
So, I, you know, that would be, and I would like to, I, do we have something on the water bill now though that was going toward some kind of...
Compost search church, twenty-five cents, yeah. And I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's...
Could we find out what we got in that fund?
Um, let's see if that's, yeah, that should be, that was a separate fund.
We don't have anybody out at the compost site now.
No, and I, that's what I suggested last time, is that I think that it should be just a budgeted item that it... You know, a spring cleanup is a mandatory expenditure, you know.
Right, and I know we can do that for this year, but maybe there's something that we could do now, like just to start.
Well, but there's gotta be money in that fund. I don't know how much because we haven't had anybody hired to sit out at the compost site. And we've been collecting that.
Was it a year? Last year we didn't have anybody, I think the year before we did.
So, I mean, that's kind of accumulated a couple bucks from somebody, about three thousand dollars.
I was gonna say about three thousand a year, I think it's what it is.
That would probably, three thousand dollars would go a long way. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we'll check that balance for ya.
So, why don't we talk about that next meeting again?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Setting a date at some point.
No, I agree with that. I think initially though, I know, Bill, you're talking about branches and whatnot, but I think to get it going, I think it'd be helpful for appliances, furnishings, that type of thing. And then we can, then we can go to leaves and branches or whatnot because I think that's the biggest issue for a lot of folks is, you know, I'll say myself in particular, like computer monitors and all kinds of other junk, you know. It'd be nice if we could get all that sorted, so. Alright, so we will do that. Okay, next we have Chris Platt. Chris, how you doing?
Hey, how are you?
Not too bad. Your attorney's here again. Nice seeing you, sir.
Yeah, thanks for having me down here.
And did you, did you get what Jason, the report ever?
I did. Yeah, I did get the report and I also picked up the CD from the city attorney's office this morning. So, I saw the video and reviewed all that, so.
Okay, alright.
I don't know what, if you all had any specific questions to start out with or whatnot. I mean, I have some key points I wanted to hit on.
Well, just, just go ahead and that'd probably generate some discussion.
Okay, yeah, stop me at any time if you have questions or comments. So, I mean, I'm not gonna rehash all the details. You know, Chris and Jennifer had been here for five years, five-plus years. They have fifteen dogs that are all rescue animals. They're not breeders. They're, they're dogs that were, you know, they're rescue animals, beaten, different things, suffered abuse like that. And so, they're not looking to, you know, bring more animals, do anything like that, but just take care of these animals. They don't have children themselves. These are their kids. And so, that's why they hired me, because this is a very serious issue for them. There are some concerns they have with, I know there's been talk of, or there are complaints that have been brought to Ms. Peterson, people that just wanna stay anonymous because I don't know if they don't wanna be held responsible or for their statements or why they wanna be anonymous. But it, but it's hard when you don't know who it is, if they have a personal vendetta. You're not able to verify a bunch of the complaints. Some of it related to, you know, the health of the pets. We actually do have some letters here. I got this one tonight from their vets, from their vet. I don't know if I'd be able to pass these around. Okay, I have one that I just got tonight. The other one I have multiple copies of. Take one of the copies and pass it around and then look at the other one. They take good care of their animals. They're, you know, they've had them this long for a reason. Obviously, some of them are on their last legs and aren't gonna last a whole heck of a lot longer. But they do care for them. And they're willing, you know, to, to make certain improvements to, to their home, to make it so... Obviously, fifteen dogs, dogs are gonna bark sometimes. They're not gonna say that they never bark. You know, they bark at times, but not very long at all. They bark when they come, come home, leave the home a little bit, just for a couple minutes, and then when they feed them. But otherwise, when, because Mr. Platt is usually the one that's home with Ms. Roach being on the road so much, able to calm them down pretty quickly. So, I mean, like I say, dogs bark. They have, but they are willing to put up a composite fence. They know that one of the neighbors, you know, like I said, we don't have all the facts about the complaints, but one neighbor that they know doesn't like the dogs, you know, they're willing to put up a composite fence there. It costs about fifteen hundred dollars to try to drown out the sound more for when they, they come and go. They are getting what are called bark collars. They're not shock collars, but they, they just have a little vibration. The louder they bark, the, you know, bigger the vibration is to try to, to even shorten the barking even more. And they'd also be willing, right now, the house has hardwood floors. They'd be willing to consider doing some carpet in there if they had to. The dogs, obviously, they had carpet when they moved in, but the dogs, I don't know, there were certain issues with it, Chris.
It was just off white. It was hard to keep clean from all the snow, salt and mud and stuff tracked in, so we just pulled it. And where the carpet was, it's unfinished floor, so we put carpet back in or we were thinking about redoing the floors and, you know, try to, try to sound barrier it a little bit. Because my biggest thing too is on the complaints, and Steve and Tony would be the only ones to know this, when we first got our first permit with you guys, you guys had a discussion on how were you gonna take the complaints, if they were legit or not. You guys said it had to go through the police department and be investigated. So, these complaints coming into City Hall and the council members, you guys just said wouldn't be legitimate complaints because they had to go through the police department and be investigated. That's my only concern in that, is nothing had been called into the police department. It's all coming into City Hall. And you, Tony and Steve are the only ones that, on the council now, that were on the council at the time when we first got our permit, five years ago. I mean, I do the best I can to keep them quiet and, I mean, like I said, they're gonna bark. They hear kids outside that we've got, I think, one, two, three, probably four of their dogs in the neighborhood. If they hear them bark, they're gonna bark, but if I'm home, I've got them quieted down. The only time they're gonna bark was if I'm not there to quiet them down, you know, if I'm at work or if I have to run an errand or something. But I mean, we like living in Tracy. We've been here for almost six years. We've had no problems in the past, so.
Well, I understand. Do you have anything else?
Just to point out, I know that in the last minutes, there was, you know, something to the effect of Mr., you know, Platt didn't reach out to the police chief to get him into the house. Well, obviously, according to the chief's report here, he made sure that he came to the house, not just that, you know, the chief said, "Well, I don't really, I count the animals." But he said, "No, they want you in the house. Please come through the house," so.
Because he wasn't at the meeting, the last meeting, he said you guys had already made your decision. I don't know if he didn't know we were back on the docket for the twenty-seventh, or...
Well, we still, I think, the reason why we just came back in is because we had, like, what was it? The thirty-day compliance or something like that? And this, this came within the thirty days, so we knew we were gonna revisit it anyway.
Yeah, and then just the last thing, so obviously they're requesting another one-year permit. If, if the permit isn't granted, they, they can't give up these dogs. They're, there's a vet that's told them, you know, dogs have been together this long. They're basically a pet. They're gonna get depressed and, you know, could die from depression given their age and whatnot. So, they would request that they at least get, you know, a few months to be able to find a place and to move out with Ms. Roach on the road all the time. So, with the stipulation that this is all it's gonna be, it's not gonna be longer, so.
I understand that. The only, is that it?
I don't have any, I don't have any.
The only, the only thing I had, Chris, I'm trying to remember, I don't know if Tony remembers or not. Now, we had this discussion before too, but initially when we gave the permission for the dogs, and I can't recall if we said it was specific for that property.
See, I don't, that, that, I got brought up too when we first...
Yeah, and I, and I can't, and I can't, because I, I know initially when, when we dealt with it, is because you guys moved into town and you had no idea about the three dog ordinance. And so, well, we, you know, okay, we don't want people not to come here because they didn't realize it's okay for this.
Well, we were misinformed. That was the whole deal there.
Well, no, I get that, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, it's then if you go to a different property within the town, then you do know the existence of an ordinance saying you can only have three. Do you know what I'm saying?
I'm trying to remember back. I think that there was nothing in there tying us to one address here in town. I don't think there was.
I think that it did, tent was that, because I, I truly believe the only reason it was allowed in the first place is because you had a council member living next door and he was not offended by the dogs and didn't mind barking. And he swayed the council to go along with his way of thinking. And I do remember telling you, and I don't recall police investigating any complaint, neighbor complaints. I don't, I never said that. And I said, everything was hinged on, the caveat that there were no complaints from any neighbors.
Yeah, I just remember back.
There were complaints from the neighbors after you left Seventh Street because you didn't bring the animals with you right away.
Yep, I remember that.
And that's why I was hesitant when you got to where you're at, to allow it to go on. But the council agreed that that was okay. And I sat there and I told you, once a year, you'll come in and get a permit, and if there's any complaints, it's done.
And I, and not to talk about when you say, "Well, Mike didn't say that," he said, "Don't worry about it." No, I, I don't really care about that no more. I mean, I understand that's probably the case and you're not gonna be penalized because you didn't if you were told differently. We just gotta deal with the issue right now and go forward with that. So, I mean, I guess the answer to our question, we could certainly look into minutes to see whether or not we said it's specific to the address or not because I can't remember what was said twenty-eleven, but...
I went back through the minutes and I didn't see anywhere.
Didn't see it?
No.
It wasn't heard, it wasn't...
But I don't know if it matters.
Has the number of animals changed?
We said we're gonna revisit it because it was within the thirty-day requirement. So, it's thirty-day period to rectify something.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Matt?
No, I asked him if the number of animals had changed since the initial application of the permit was issued.
It's the exact same.
Exact same.
I don't know. Does anybody else have any other questions? Well... I can't bring a motion for anything. So, I don't know whether or not you say you keep what we have in or whether or not you give him an opportunity if he's talking about, because there's things like we didn't know about the bark collars and whatnot and the fence. I mean, I don't know, obviously a bark collar certainly helps.
For a while. After a while, they get used to it.
So, I, I don't know. I mean, I, I mean, I understand the situation that he's in and Jason did go in and...
Well, it's unfortunate. In my opinion, it should have never been allowed in the first place and it, that's unfortunate for you that it was. However, with, you know, what, what I know now, I haven't changed my mind yet and I would make a motion that we not allow the special, or the exception to the ordinance of three dogs.
Alright, if, if, what were you asking for, so I know specifically, if in fact that that's maintained, how much time are you asking for?
I mean, they'd like six months given Ms. Roach on the road, but I mean, obviously, any time, you know, that they could have would be really appreciated because obviously the thirty days is up, well, in a couple days.
Yeah, I know, I understand.
And it takes some time to find a house and get moved and everything. It's not something we're gonna be able to get done in thirty days.
No, no, I, I understand. Would you, would you amend that at all for a specific period of time that they'd be able to get the dogs out if in fact others are gonna vote to say not to give them the permit again?
Well, then we should, let me reset my motion then. If that's the case, we should first decide what kind of timeline we're gonna allow. And what are the consequences if it's not met by the end of the timeline?
To answer that, I would say we've already got an approved motion not to renew the permit. So, the question before us now is a timeline. Because I'm not gonna change my vote either.
So, do we feel six months is too long?
It could be, and I think, Dave, you voted that way too, right?
Yes.
Is there, would you, you're changing your mind at all or no?
No, I wouldn't.
Okay. I think then what we need to do then is do with the timeline. I...
So, the motion we've already passed, so you're saying we don't need to do that?
Right. I would make a motion that they've got ninety days to make, or get rid of the dogs.
See, and I think they probably need a little longer than that. Because if they're trying to find someplace new to move into.
They were already given thirty. That's four months. I don't know what difference.
No, no, I, but, but also within that thirty, we said you can come back again. So, I mean, that wasn't, the entire time wasn't devoted to finding a new place. It was also to relitigate an issue possibly and present stuff. I, I would say six months to have it taken care of, in my opinion, would be sufficient. And then that's...
I've got a motion.
Got a motion. I would second the motion.
Or ninety?
Yeah.
And really, that'd be to extend the timeline in which for them to, other, come into compliance with the ordinance or to remove the animals to a number that complies.
Right.
Yeah, because the council already...
Denied the permit.
Denied the permit and then they included a time for which them to comply or remove the animals.
The original thirty day.
The motion would be to amend and change the amount of time in which to either extend that period or come into compliance.
Alright, so the motion is to, for ninety days, ninety days compliance and it's second. Any other, what are you thinking?
I think sixty, six months.
Six months. Hundred and eighty days is what I would think is fair. Especially considering having to move.
I think that's a lot to do in ninety days.
So, are you looking at September twenty-fourth? Or are you looking at June twenty-fourth?
Well, they got the motion already for ninety days.
No, I mean, that's just ninety days.
It's just making it out long.
Oh, okay. I need that.
We're in discussions.
We all do. I, I'm thinking with the number of dogs and having to actually find another place, I, I think six months is reasonable and that's why I wouldn't, I don't think that would be sufficient. Any other discussion? The motion made in second for a ninety-day extension. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Bill, I can do it. Bill?
Yes.
Steve?
No.
Tony?
Yes.
Dave?
Aye.
Pam?
No.
Alright, so it's ninety days, it'd be to June what?
What was it? What's the date of it?
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-seventh?
So, it'd be June twenty-seventh, roughly, maybe give or take a day or two depending on what ninety is. Okay? Okay, thank you for coming.
Thank you for your time.
Yep, thank you. Okay. Airport hangar?
Shane, have you, he told you earlier that he is designing a letter to get out in contact with the person that is not storing that hangar, so...
I'm guessing that's the issue is the storage or the grading?
What do we need to talk about?
No, what, what we wanted to do is that...
Oh, was the swap, and we...
Yeah, we were gonna swap.
We talked about two issues, so I just wanted to make sure I get the right one, so.
The swap.
So, now we talked about the, the grading thing with Bollig, so. But, yeah, I'm sending these letters out and that's gonna kinda tell me what they're using it for and whether they're complying with the intent of the FAA's guidelines. The way it looks right now, they're not, that one. So, last year I got two inquiries on hangar rent from different people. I mean, if they're not using the hangar for what it's intended for and their end number's not even, doesn't even apply for our town, why have them here?
Mm-hmm.
But I'd agree with that. At the same time, the city can't be using it for storage either, just...
No, and we discussed that too.
That, that would be my only caveat with it.
Yep.
But yeah, if they're, if they don't have a tail number registered out there, they don't need a hangar out there.
I think all we have is half a Humvee out there, so we just gotta find a home for that.
So, they say he's probably using it for other storage and that's...
I know, one time they used it for, for lockup for the confiscated and some vehicles and stuff.
They're all gone now.
Yeah, so it's... And I would say if there's nothing else out there, nobody's renting it for a short term, that's not a problem. But to sit there and make a long-term storage for them, when you're not allowing the public to do it, then you gotta...
Right, especially when there's other storage, you know, available that they, you know. What do we get for a hangar storage?
Hundred and sixty-five dollars a quarter.
A quarter?
Mm-hmm. For the normal-sized ones, T-hangers, I think.
That's the problem. It's, I mean, it's not as sealed as a storage unit is, but it's cheaper than a storage room unit for square footage-wise, so. But that's not really what it's there for.
Well, no, because then you'd almost have to open it up like Tony's, you'd be allowed to put down there and rent that.
Yeah.
They knew they could store a car and a boat or something in there, you know.
I wouldn't say they're weather tight, but it keeps it out of the weather.
Right. Keeps most of the sun off them.
Yeah. Sounds good. Anything else about the hair, hair phone? New business? Is there any new business? Money, money? No? Mayor and council communications?
What, our, our next meeting is April tenth and then after that, is it the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth? I didn't write it down.
Twenty-fourth is Truth and Taxation meeting.
Meeting here?
And the twenty-fifth is the regular council meeting.
Okay, okay. I gotta change that. Truth and Taxation, we all need to be here for that, correct?
Whoa, okay.
You need it more.
How many people are trained?
You.
I'm in?
No, Pam.
No, I think...
Pam is?
Okay, as long as there's one person trained and there is a quorum, it's good?
Yes.
Okay, because, what time are we supposed to be here? Seven?
Seven.
Okay, because I am going to be cutting a... Okay, because I am going to be cutting it close, because I have a hearing in Buffalo at one. So.
You better talk fast.
I do. So, I'm just saying, just in case, I might not get here right exactly at seven.
Well, they told us only one, and there's two of you, so.
Okay.
So, that's at seven o'clock, okay?
And that training isn't available.
Did you go out and check?
Well, not this month, but the last time I looked, it wasn't available yet.
Okay, I know it's on State Audit's website, I can provide anybody with a link to it.
But it, I'll check it when I come home again.
I can call and find out.
Well, they gave me a date, I don't remember what the date is.
Oh, okay.
But, yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't available till after this meeting, so.
I wanna say there's expires in, I wanna say June.
That shouldn't last for long, too.
Never more than an hour.
Well, don't we have to be here like an hour and a half, though?
You gotta be here an hour. They posted time from seven to, unless they changed, but that's, it was an hour.
God, why do I think we had to be here from like seven to nine before? I thought it was.
An hour and a half, I think.
Yeah, I thought it was an hour and a half.
Please help the change on me.
Yeah, okay, so, seven o'clock. Pam will be here. Everybody else will be here?
I should be able to, I may be coming in on fumes. Well, that's a nice suit on.
Ooh! Dries up every now and then. And then, then our council meeting is the following, is the following day.
Yeah.
Okay, and then Mayor and Council of Communications. One thing I wanted to visit about, Bill had mentioned to me, and it was a good idea, I think. When we had done the nuisance enforcement things in the past, were there other people that went out with Jason sometimes?
Not with Jason, but it goes back to when Brian was here, they had a.
I meant to say.
Couple of community members.
Drove around in a vehicle and, you know.
And I remember that, and I, I don't, you know, unless Jason's adverse to it, I know in the past, a lot of times the complaints were, you know, we don't get the support, so therefore, you know. I think having a committee, or having somebody with Jason to go do those things would be a good thing. And not only just for the actual touring themselves, but to field complaints from people. Instead of like having, like when Ed Marlin come up and saying, oh, this property, that property, and here's a picture, look at this, here's a picture, look at that. It might be helpful if we did formulate some committee as a way for people to give us information. To a particular committee that's in charge of nuisance enforcements or can direct it towards Jason. So, you know, I don't know whether there's any interest in formulating that. I know when people hear about forming a committee, everybody frowns because it just means it's a committee that doesn't do anything. But I think for this particular issue, because we hear it so many times, it might be worth having, to get something together, not only to go out with Jason, but also to have a committee that can field issues from the public as they arise. So, is I summarizing that correctly, Bill?
Yeah, I think so, I mean, I think, well, one of the comments that I heard was, you know, have we ever had anybody in a group sit down and review those ordinances to see if there's anything that needs to be changed, or, you know, because we always run into the issue of, we might think it looks like junk, but the people who own it, it's their art. How do you, at some point, you gotta distinguish between that and say, no, it's junk. The city council says it's junk, it's junk, it's gotta go. Versus the officer trying to decide and take that, you know, well, is it, you know. So, I think that would suffice if we just had a couple, and I would certainly volunteer to do that. I mean, I'm passionate about it, I just think we gotta do a better job of enforcing the ordinance.
But it needs to be an ongoing thing.
An ongoing, that's not just once a year.
We do it once a year type thing.
Right, absolutely.
One of the reasons that the ride-alongs stopped is because, well, you know, I know that guy, that'll be gone next week, so we won't do that. Well, and the neighbor says, you let him up, but you got me. You know, so, I'm not saying that's gonna happen, but that was one of the things. The other thing, the reason to stop was, and the enforcement started slacking off is because they come in front of the council and say, he wrote me up, and they give him a pass. So, you gotta support the police department's choice, whether you agree with it or not, you gotta support it. And then, with that being said, and enforcement at all times, you know, that really makes a difference. And I said, I got calls back when Jason started doing it, knocking on doors, the pictures of the problem in the letter, and delivered it personally instead of an impersonal deal. People actually called up and thanked for that. I know it's time consuming, and maybe that's where, maybe that's where the committee could come in, instead of having Jason knock on the door and paying five dollars to certify a mail, if somebody from the committee would knock on the door and say, hey, this is what we identified, do you need any help getting this out of your yard, or do you need any help doing this?
That's a good idea.
Versus.
Excellent idea.
I don't like that one, I like this one, I don't like that one. I mean, to me, that would be, that would help the enforcement side of it, and it also personalizes it.
No, that's a good idea. So, why don't we?
And it kind of ties in with the whole city cleanup thing, too.
Yep, yeah.
And I think we gotta get rid of the fact that we've always thought, well, the neighbor should talk to the neighbor and tell, that just isn't gonna happen.
No.
It's just not gonna happen.
Not this day, age immortals.
I'm very passionate about it myself, and I totally agree with everything that you guys are saying, and I see a lot of, lot of places that I often wonder myself, what, what do we have to do to, you know, change the way that things are done with it? Whether it be as low as having a committee or going all the way up to, you know, bringing it to a court or, you know, whatever.
Well, the enforcement has to be consistent, so it's not like, oh, I know so-and-so, like Tony's saying, so-and-so, he'll clean it up next week. Well, I don't care about next week because I'm seeing it today and it's wrong.
That is what I've been hearing too, is that.
So, it doesn't matter who it is, I mean.
Because it's in process or whatever, or.
Maybe what we do there, that if we have a small committee, like Tony's idea, we could go up to the house, say, hey, here's, here's an issue that we see, it needs to be cleaned up. You're gonna have this many days to do it, do you need help? And you need to understand that if you don't get it done, then you're gonna be receiving a.
You're gonna get a fine for it.
A fine in the mail, and, you know, give them a, give them that time to ask for help, or, you know. I don't know, that's not a bad idea.
Are we gonna go on a consistent timeframe for everything too? I mean, is it like a, is it like a two-week thing, is it a month?
I think it should be year, I think it should be year-round, I mean.
No, but I mean, once, once you walk up to their house.
Oh, to clean it up. I think what he's been giving them is ten days.
I was gonna say, it should be within thirty days.
I think it's less than that.
Well, I'm just for consistency's sake on everything.
Yeah.
Well, I guess it really depends on what the nuisance is.
Right.
There are some nuisances that can take longer than thirty days. I mean, if it's like pick your sticks up and throw your garbage out.
Well, and like we did with, with one resident, to paint, and they just said, I can't get it done this year, can you give me till next year to get it done? Well, if we know that, you know, if they're working with us to try and do that. But I would think if we did it once a month, you know, have them in a vehicle and drove around town once a month, it doesn't take that, doesn't take that long.
The painting is more of a compliance, but the nuisance.
The compliance.
Would be more like the thirty days, because the nuisance.
And I think it's even less than that.
They should be able to abate that within.
The nuisance part.
Yeah, they should be able to do that with a ten days.
Right, but the garage needs to be shingled or else it needs to be painted.
That's a little bit different, yeah.
They might need a little longer.
I'd try to give them at least a year.
Somebody not might be able to afford it either.
And if there's, and if there's ones that we've given a year in the past and it's been three years on, we have to, we have to enforce it.
Do we wanna wait till Jason gets back and then just share with him what we're thinking, and then just have, put together a committee of three or four to go with?
I think that's sufficient, and Bill, you could be on there as a council representative, and you could have more committees and ask for people to apply, then they don't apply, then you wind up with Bill and Jason and that.
I would love to be part of that.
That's true, Madonna, that's very good.
I would love to be part of that.
And I've had a couple of residents that have said they'd be in favor of doing something like that, so I don't think we'd have.
And we don't, yeah, we could do.
You could randomly tag somebody if they're willing and use it that way, it's not us against them, and, you know, type thing, you eliminate that.
No, but I mean, it's more than just informally going around the look, it would be fielding issues from people and meeting regularly to say, hey, did you get anything? Yes, I did. Okay, yeah, Madonna, Bill, and then Jason, and then I would say I have two community members. And.
Do we need them to apply, because you're not formally establishing a committee, right?
No, no, they can just, we can, they can come.
Just an informal request, you got them, Bill?
And then, please encourage the people to apply for the charter commission.
I'll go beat some bushes again.
Because I agree, once you start digging in, there's so many things that need to be changed, it's, I don't know.
Seth, would you be willing to do an interview with one of us about the charter commission?
Absolutely.
That would be wonderful.
So, anyways, anybody have anything else? Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, the thing that Tony had prepared about the assessment.
Oh, put on it, oh.
It was in the paper last night?
Yep. Did you, did you read it?
Yeah, it was, oh, I know what we're gonna talk about, what was the, that new business.
Putting that, yeah.
Well, she.
Behavior care specialist on the agenda next month.
Well, what's our next meeting look like, is it gonna, I mean.
It's the middle of month, the tenth, it's usually pretty light, yeah.
Do you think it'll take a full hour for her, I mean, is that kinda what she's.
It depends, I think that she's allowing that for questions. I mean, I can, I can tell her how much time she's gonna have, she's, here's the deal. I get, somebody walks in and asks me this on Thursday, I do a quick Google search, I send an email off, hey, would you be interested in starting something here in southwest Minnesota? I went home for lunch and the phone rings, it's the gal who started this business. Yeah, I'd be more than happy to, we just finished one, the permit's already full. So, I said, well, what do you need in order to come out and talk to folks? And she was looking for a forum like this, where she'd get the word out to everybody, and so.
The only other thing I wanted to just, I know it's, on the liquor committee or whoever's looking at that for, you know, what we're gonna do and all that, and looking at the hours, I think there's a lot of room there that we could make some adjustments on hours.
So, what are we looking for, hours of being open, or?
For hours of being open, yeah. And I think, I think summer could be different than winter, you know, but if you look at from nine to noon, if you look at the numbers from nine to noon, not much happens at all.
You're also, just from being in that business, you're also gonna have to look at, like, I'm there at eight o'clock in the morning for orders.
Vendors have gotta be in there.
And vendors have to be taken, so.
But that's, we got a manager that can be there without it being open.
Yep.
You know, I'm just thinking of, so, you know, in summertime, you might have to open earlier than noon, and maybe it's Saturday.
But once you start changing hours.
Yeah.
And people you have that come in at that early, they'll never come back. Because if you have people that are getting off work in Marshall at eight o'clock in the morning, and they're driving home and stopping and getting something, and they buy it here all the time, and they're here at, let's say, nine o'clock in the morning, or ten o'clock. If we close and we're not opening till noon, they're never, they're never gonna buy another drop.
Dave, I'm not disagreeing with that, but I'm just saying if you look at the numbers, nine to noon, there's very, very little happening.
But if, but if ninety percent of the time Sandy's the only one there.
Well, that should be.
She's gonna be there anyhow.
Yeah, and that, yeah, so, I mean, I, just food for thought.
She'd only be there for. I was gonna say, I think it's a double coverage.
Yeah, I think the main thing is we.
That's the thing.
Double coverage.
Where our profits are at if we're.
And I did.
The whole idea going to that was to reduce the overhead of labor, and it's just.
Exactly, and I did talk to her about it, and it was not as receptive I expected it to be because, you know, we're, they're employees, you know, and.
It's understandable, I mean, it was like a business decision.
Exactly.
We've been losing money too long.
Yeah.
Because if we're not, the whole purpose of that is to make money for the city, to bring monies back in, and if that's not happening.
There's time to go.
We need to look at something different, so.
And then, have we heard from the college kids yet?
Not yet. I sent them the.
Can we tell them to hurry up, or?
I sent them the last December one, and they were gonna do the next year after the December one, and then from there, I do know that the professor is, I don't think he's there all the time. I think he takes care of, I think he takes care of like a handicapped wife. So, I know that that was some communication that she said, that was one thing.
Okay, well, we could remind them again, it'd be nice to get them.
We do have information from other liquor stores that have moved to a location that have said, you know, that it's, it's been great for them. You already do know from, I believe, the economic development, that that end of town and the traffic on that end of town is.
Yeah, I.
You know.
I, I know, I know we probably don't need a piece of paper to tell us that out there's.
I was gonna say.
It just helps having that as a way of justifying any potential move.
I do.
We need to control our overhead before we think about moving to another location.
That is, that is very true, and if you guys did a walkthrough over there, Dave's been in,